I'd like to call on Monday, March 6, 2017 City Council meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Wimmer.
Here.
Alderman Condon.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time then, I will go back to the public comment portion. And we have four people signed in this evening. We'd ask that you step to the podium and identify yourself for the record. You'll be asked but are not required to provide your address. And public comment may be restricted to three minutes for each individual speaker. And order and decorum are asked to be maintained at public meetings. So the first speaker is Maureen Bazin.
Hello. As Mayor Sula said, I'm Maureen Bazin. I own the property at 3317 Pearl Street, which is right next to Smith's Central Garage. And the reason why I'm here tonight is that I'd like to share just a few concerns about the special condition usage and three requests that we have with that regard. I did send an outline of a petition that I had several residences sign. And I also outlined my three points. I'm assuming that you all have those, but I can certainly read them. So the petition has several people that live in very close proximity to the building. This was a map, which I can pass around. It was provided at the building and zoning. And it shows that the property, Smith Central Garage, abuts three residences and it's kitty corner from a fourth. And it is two houses down from another residence. So it's a very close proximity to where people are residing. And so that brings me to my concern as well as the people in those residences with regard to the outdoor, the proposed area for the outdoor seating and entertainment. John Smith has indicated that that's a goal in the future to refinish that area and make it much more aesthetically pleasing. And then at that time, he would have outdoor seating. So our concern as residences is that the outdoor seating and dining not go late into the evening. So we are proposing that the outdoor seating end at 10:00 PM, whether that be a weekday or whether that be on the weekend. And in coordination with that, that there be no amplified music. And the reason for that is just simply that, you know, the building, Smith Central Garage, is currently 3,000 square feet, soon to be 7,000. So after 10:00 PM, it's our contention that there's really not a necessity for people to be outside when residences are 20 feet from that outdoor dining area. And having amplified music, and I'm a professional musician, beyond 10 o'clock, that affects people being able to go to sleep. It affects people being able to sit outside and read a book. So there's concerns with that timing. And so we're requesting that the outdoor dining end at 10, that there be no amplified music. So what we mean is that a string quartet could be outside, a guitarist, a harpist. But the DJ can't run a wedge speaker as big as this podium with a chord outside the window and be blasting Jay-Z and Bruno Mars and what have you for the outside people. And that does happen. As a professional musician, I'm often asked to accommodate the people outside with the same music that we play inside. So that's a big concern when you've got bedroom windows 20 feet within the outdoor seating area. And then the third point is with regard to the fence. Obviously, a fence is not necessary unless the patio area is complete. So our, and the fence is required. I'm already well aware of that. But our condition is just that there be something in black and white that would specify that fencing. So John Smith has indicated that he doesn't want the fence to be too high or to be solid up to a certain point so that his people outside dining can enjoy the view of the park. And so our request as residents nearby would be that once it reaches the front of the house, that at that point then, it become solid decorative fencing, five to six feet high. And the precedence for that is the Polish American Legion Club, which abuts a residential house. And they have a six-foot-high decorative privacy fencing for that same reason, for privacy, for the people. And, you know, it's not going to block noise, but it's going to deter some of that. So those are really the three conditions. All of the neighbors that I met with, and I met with eight, of those eight, seven people signed the petition in agreement. And the eighth person was Frank McClatchy, who agreed with all of these points, but he just wasn't comfortable signing the petition. So those are the three things that we are requesting, not just myself, but the residents and I. And I'm so excited about the beautiful job that John Smith has done with the building. He's a great man. I know him personally. And he's a great businessman. So we don't have any, you know, really anything to say except that we're just asking for a few conditions to be mindful of the residents that live very close by.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Next is Cecilia Saratella.
Hello, everybody. Mayor Alderman. I'm Cecilia Saratella. I live at 4916 West Shore Drive in Lakeland Park, McHenry. I'm here tonight to kind of speak for the folks that couldn't make this meeting. Basically, it's the same as what Maureen has projected, maybe a little bit different. The issues here are for normal protection, where there is a different property usage requested. The protection for the residents who live on Pearl and on Park are simple. They are entitled to a peaceful living condition. These requirements should be part of your approval now, or they will never be able to be added in the future, as we all know. These requirements would only have to be completed prior to the Smith family usage of that area. Number one, very simple, fence, as Maureen just explained. Music, no music, either live or piped in, whether it's, no matter what kind of music it is, those folks don't want to listen to someone else's choice of music for four or five hours, 20 feet from their house. They're entitled to quiet. And time, if in fact that area is closed at 10 o'clock, should not be a problem, even though our city code reads 11 o'clock. If in fact the Smith family has a lease with whoever is using that building, that lease is going to state all kinds of stuff, what those people have to do on the inside when they're through, et cetera. And it would be very simple in John's lease to have property to be vacated at 10 o'clock and no outside music. I mean, it's a very simple thing, I'm sure, for John to do. It won't impact on his business one way or the other. So again, we are asking the City Council to make these requirements part of your approval. I think that the people, our residents, deserve your protection of their peace and quiet in their homes. Thank you.
Michael Bazin?
I'm Michael Bazin, also co-owner of the property there. That yard on that side of the building is the only piece of yard that we have. The other two sides of the building have a sidewalk. And literally, it's 25 feet from that wall to the entrance to the home. We're just asking for some consideration, and not vague consideration. John's word would be great, but John's a businessman. I'm a businessman. His property, if at some point he's going to stop being an owner, sell it, and what I see is this is an infringement on my property and also devalues my property by this use. Maureen mentioned we're professional musicians. A banquet place like this, we've been in thousands of them. They always have proximity, no buildings anywhere near that, let alone personal residents, and/or ample parking, which is also going to be an infringement for our tenants. Currently, we have a 24-year-old girl living upstairs, college student, and it would be uncomfortable if we had a child, our niece, living somewhere like that where there's party people drinking and staying out late. I think this is going to make it harder for us to attract good tenants and keep good tenants in that property. And once again, that's the only yard that we have on that property. And I'm sure John's guests don't want our tenant walking their dog or barbecuing or anything else close to his business as well. So I know I'm not going to change the usage, but I don't think it's a good usage for that building. And I think that we are being inconvenienced and infringed upon with our property and the adjoining properties. Also, even if they are not even outside, there's going to be plenty of sound from many people in a party atmosphere. And once again, it's literally 26 feet to our front door from that side. And I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. Cheryl Ann Wilton?
Wilton Hane.
Sorry.
Starting a little hoarse.
Sorry.
I am Cheryl Ann Wilton Hane. I am the resident, and I lease from Maureen Bazin. I would definitely ask to have a fence put up there. It's the privacy. John has been wonderful during this whole time, and he has definitely made the outside a hundred percent better. But I would ask that a fence be put up there for myself and for the future. I've been there 14 years with Maureen, and I would just think that it would be, you know, a nice thing to have a fence up there. Plus, the gentleman that lives next door to me is a fireman, and he has different working hours. And if he's trying to sleep, he can't, you know, get good sleep. But there's a lot of sound coming out of that area that he wants to make it outside better, that area. That's all I get to say.
Thank you. Is anyone else here wishing to speak in public input this evening about any matter? Seeing no one then, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number seven, a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and approve an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use and outdoor seating and entertainment for the property located at 3315 Pearl Street. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. City Council is being asked to consider a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, which is a gathering space with outdoor seating and entertainment at 3315 Pearl Street. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. City Council is being asked to consider a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, which is a gathering space with outdoor seating and entertainment at 3315 Pearl Street. There are three conditions on the approval. I'm going to suggest an additional condition. I did discuss this with Mr. Smith, and he's in agreement with this condition. And that is that there be no outside entertainment after 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday nights, or after 11:00 PM, Friday through Sunday nights. And this is, this condition is the same one that was put on Buddy Z's as well as the redevelopment of the theater. So I would ask that that be put on the ordinance as an additional condition for approval. May I have answered any questions?
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion to approve this item as presented with those conditions and that additional condition included.
Thank you. Is there a second, Alderman Condon? Discussion, Alderman Schaefer?
This is, from the standpoint of this being a, located in an existing commercial area, approval of the conditional uses, to me, fits into that area already because of what we have going on directly across the street in the park and at several other locations just down the street, within a block. I do, I'm very happy that the condition in writing was put in for the timeframe of the outside entertainment. I know I had discussed that several times with Maureen herself and also with you, Doug. So I know that was the condition. The also, the condition about the fence is included in there too. So I think, hopefully, that, again, is meeting all of the things that the neighbors had talked about. And from the standpoint of having an establishment like this, again, with another person who is from the city, and I know that doesn't want to have things in his building become deteriorate in any way from the standpoint of whether it be rented out for a certification that has entertainment. This is something that I think that those people involved with that too are also going to be very conscious of, whether they're there or not. The other thing is that aside from this being, even though we're matching the timeframe of other establishments, for example Buddy's and the theater, which just came to us, those are seven-day-a-week facilities. This, although I think John would love to have it be used seven days a week, it probably won't be. So again, I think too, from that standpoint, this is very accommodating for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a couple of questions. In the write-up that we have, when we talk about, I guess we'll go with the fence first, it says less than 50% occupancy. Is that what we meant? Or? In the description? It's not in the motion, it's in the description.
Yeah, that was amended at the planning of zoning.
Okay.
That was taken out, that opacity level. So it's just applicants should submit a permit for seating, including proposed fencing and gate.
Okay. All right. And on the, so the outside entertainment, basically, what you're saying there is it would match, as you said, Buddy's and maybe a couple others in town. So, but that's still amplified entertainment or non-amplified?
It's, there'd be no outside entertainment after 11, Fridays, any type of entertainment.
But up to that point?
Up to that point, yeah. You could have entertainment out there.
And it could be amplified entertainment.
It could be, yes.
That's what we're saying. And after, and so the entertainment would stop at 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 11:00 PM, Friday through Sunday, but not necessarily outside activity, right?
Correct.
Just the entertainment.
Correct.
So it could still be people sitting at the tables and talking, whatever.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And the occupancy right now would be, I lost the number, but around 100 or so? Is that correct? Something about sprinklers, when sprinklers, if sprinklers cap and later, there would be an increase in potential occupancy? Is that right? Yes, there would be. A rough estimate, I think we came up with about 300, once John sprinklers the building. Once you have sprinklers. Correct. Right now, it is about 100 without the sprinklers. All right. And I know it's not required, but I, you know, I think we're going to, we're going to hear more about parking, you know, in the area, but I know it's not a C4 requirement on an owner. Okay. I think that's all the questions we have.
Alderman Wimmer?
I think planning and zoning has covered everything pretty good on this side. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Alderman Condon?
Fairly sure you know the answer to this, but with the second condition, where it says applicants shall submit a permit for the outdoor seating area, including proposed fencing and gate, as well as egress points prior to utilizing the outdoor area in the subject property in conjunction with any event in the building on the subject property, that's not with each event, that's just once, correct?
Correct. Before they do an event outside.
Okay. I just wanted to, that each renter of the, having an event didn't have to come before us. And just, you know, I guess as, I certainly can appreciate and have some compassion for some of the concerns of some of the neighbors, but I, one time, I lived in a home that, where there was a proposed water tower behind our lot. It never materialized, but that was proposed. And when we bought the home, we knew that that was potentially, had potentially become a reality. And I think that every time someone buys a home or business, they have to be cognizant of what the zoning is, not only for the property, but around the property. And that there's the potential that the climate as is could change based on what is allowed in that area. And certainly, what we are proposing fits within this district. Unfortunately, there are homes there, and that does, I think that is something that has to be considered. But I think the potential for this business coming forward, I mean, there's long been discussions about needing a place, a venue for people to have parties or whatever type of events. The mix and mingle, I think, was certainly a benefit to the community, but I think this also has slightly different availability to the community to provide other types of venues that is needed in this area. And I think that Mr. Smith has done a great job in reconstructing that empty property or building into something that can be beneficial to the community. So I'm very pleased with seeing this coming to a reality.
Alderman Santi?
One of the conditions that we brought up a couple of times on the fence, it stated here, it will be a solid fence. Also, behind that, in prophecies, it goes five to six feet. Can we get, I spent some time with Mr. Smith over the weekend, walking through and asking him questions, and I feel very comfortable if we could be in agreement to have it as a six-foot fence. Is that possible? If I may ask you, Mr. Smith, is that possible, to have it as a six-foot fence? Because it says five to six feet.
Doug, what's in the motion?
Currently, it's just applicants should submit a permit for the outdoor seating, including proposed fencing. There's no height in the actual motion for the ordinance to be approved.
On the condition, it says two, five to six feet. And I'm just, I'm asking for that request, and I'll ask, you know, John and I talked about that.
Well, you can't, because there's a motion on the floor.
Can I ask Mr. Smith that question?
I don't really think that's fair to put him on the spot until there's a motion on the floor.
Well, if I was able to ask this question, which I'm not sure whether or not, or we wouldn't, we had this discussion, I had a discussion with Mr. Smith all the weekend.
Do you care to answer that, John, or do you want us to see what happens?
Well, I mean, I don't care. I mean, I don't know what it's even going to look like yet. It's going to be a class act, without question. I don't know if it's going to be five or six feet, but it's certainly not going to be a three- or four-foot fence. I'd be more than happy to say over five feet, and it probably will be six, but I don't know right offhand what that, you know, that means at this point. I know what it means. I don't know what the styles of fences are and so on.
Because it does say solid fence, correct, in the condition?
The ordinance, it does not, it does not specify solid.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. I guess at least five feet or higher. And I know John and I, John and I did speak about that over the weekend. I feel very comfortable, and I know he'll do a good job in being able to put something up there that's very decorative and basically unsuiting to both parties, whether they sit in the patio or whether it's someone that's sitting in their home in that small yard section off to the side. I know a couple of people did bring up some interesting concerns. We do have the music on weekends, music on weekdays, right now at the 10:00 hour and also at 11:00 on the weekends. And that's something that we hold. Other proprietors possibly like this, depending on how this project gets developed in regards to if it becomes more, say, of a banquet hall slash restaurant type of setting in the future. And I myself agree with, or check with Alderman Curry in regards to when the music closes or when music stops, that patio seating, just like in other facilities, we'd still be allowed to sit out there and enjoy the evening after that timeframe with just a musical stop. But actually, we can still have access to the patio, correct?
Correct.
That's all it is. Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah. Number one, I think the fence height is an issue. I don't see, John's a businessman. This conditional use is basically a contract of summit nature between the city and John, or whoever the property owner is. And nobody ever signs a contract or approves a contract without all the details in there. And these are loose ends, and I think a fence height, and I wouldn't want to limit it to exactly six feet. I mean, if it's at five to six feet, you could wind up with a certain type of fence that looks extremely great and would really enhance the property at five feet. And then if we forcibly make it do. We do have the, um, music on weekends, music on weekdays, uh, right now at, at the, at the ten o'clock hour, and also at eleven o'clock on the weekends, uh, and that's something that we hold. Other proprietors possibly like this, depending on how, um, this project gets developed, uh, in regards to if, um, if it becomes more of, say, of a banquet hall slash restaurant type of setting in the future. And I myself, um, agree with, or check with, uh, with, um, Alden Curry in regards to when the, uh, the music closes, or, or when music stops, that patio seating, just like in other facilities, we'd still be allowed to sit out there and enjoy the evening after that timeframe with just, just a musical stop, but actually, we can still have access to the patio, correct?
Correct.
That's all it is.
Okay.
I have no further questions at this time.
Alden Glab?
Yeah. Number one, I think the fence height is an issue. I don't see, uh, John's a businessman, this conditional use is basically a contract to summit nature between the city and, uh, John, or whoever the property owner is, and, uh, nobody ever signs a contract or approves a contract without all the details in there, and, uh, these are loose ends, and I think, uh, a fence height, and I wouldn't wanna limit it to exactly six feet. I mean, if it's at five to six feet, that, you could wind up with a, uh, a certain type of fence that, that looks extremely great, and would really enhance the property at five feet, and then if we forcibly make it do six feet, then he can't use what would look the best. However, I still feel that somewhere, there should be some protective apartment next door between five and six feet. Uh, I don't have a problem as far as approving something that, um, that says something like that, but to leave it loose to just say you have to have a fence, uh, whether it's John or anybody else that would be sitting there, you should be requiring specific certificate to approve something like that. A conditional use, you know, everything that's been discussed mostly has been about the protection of the neighbors next door and, and the adjoining residents, and, uh, I feel the same way as far as the fact that we need to look at how it affects any, anybody when we approve these things. I take a look and, uh, think about, uh, we approved that patio last fall, I believe it was last fall, or there's some protection, as far as, uh, that corkscrew, and, uh, and it was a lot of concerns about just losing a couple parking spots in that area, because how tight it can get sometimes. You drive there through at this time of the year, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of problems as far as parking. Yes, certain nights, you know, it gets heavier, but when it gets to be the summer months, it gets, it gets quite intense over there at certain times. Now, there is a lot of parking there, and there is a park that parks there, but nobody's gonna take, I'm sure, they're not gonna have a valet that's gonna direct everybody exactly where they have to park when they come there, plus if you're looking at it on a total build out of, let's say, three hundred and twenty people, I mean, if you use a criteria, maybe two and a half people per, uh, per car, you're looking at an extra hundred cars there. Where are those hundred cars gonna park? Now, yes, you could, you could make the argument that, well, it's C four. Well, that's why we have conditional uses in that zone, because we have to look at every factor. Now, to say that, oh, it's a dead deal because of the parking, no, but I think, I think we need to look at all these aspects. I think council needs to be aware of what you're dropping on to the next, future councils and mayors, and that's the fact that with the total build out, there will be an even bigger push that we do something about parking down there, which is going to cost the taxpayers to do it. I mean, uh, we take a look, and we looked at the Napa building, uh, quite a few years ago, and I think we were looking at over, what, four hundred and some thousand dollars. By the time you buy the property, you have to raise it, and you have to pay it and everything else. You look at four hundred thousand dollars just for one lot, you know? Needless to say, I mean, I, I take a look at the CIP that we have, and every year, it's a big deal about how little money that we normally have to, to pay for streets. How are we going to wind up building parking lots like that? I think these are things that need to be discussed. Unfortunately, these should have been discussed way before something like this came forward, but it's here, and we have to, you know, accept it, and, well, not say it accepted, but we need to analyze it and then make our decisions accordingly, but I think we need to look at all aspects. You know, we look at the criteria of the zoning, is as far as, does this impact the character of the, the neighborhood? Of course it does, any project does, but to what extent? And I think that's where we need to make the decision. I mean, is, does it slightly, uh, impact the, uh, the area, or is there a dramatic, uh, you know, impact to, to the area that surrounds this area? And that's, that's how we should be making our decision. You know, John Smith's a good businessman, he's been a good, big, prominent businessman in McHenry for many, many years. Even the people that have concerns have, have complimented him on, on what he's done with the building and everything else. And why would we want anybody to have a bad taste in their mouth about this project, considering all the effort that he has put in there, the looks of the building compared to what it did look like? And I don't think that we're being unreasonable to put certain specifics, such as the height of a fence here. As far as the music goes, you know, I know there's been comparisons that, oh, you know, Buddies and this and that, well, it's not the same type of exact situation. Yes, it's in the same type of zoning and everything else, but the residents are right there. They're not, yes, we have residents that live above the Riverwalk Building, but that commercial was there, and the development was coming forward where those apartments are, and it's not like we have, you know, somebody right next door. So, uh, all I'm asking is, is that we, we look at this and really analyze it, is as far as, are we doing the best we can for our residents while we are still trying to promote the best we can for them? There's gotta be a happy meeting, and I think just putting, making sure that those things are in the, uh, conditional use so that there's no question about it down the road. You know, this is what's required, uh, if you move forward with the patio, uh, you know, now we're talking a five to six-foot, uh, fence, and if we put a specific height, is that from the ground level, or is that from the deck level? I don't know where the deck level would wind up to be. I mean, you know, these are kinda not, not specifically, uh, pointed out in, in this ordinance, and that, that concerns me, so, those are the concerns I have right now, and I'd like to hear more what anybody else might have to say.
Alden Condon?
Um, just, I, I just wanna remind everyone, we do have no, uh, ordinances that address noise, fence, and light. Uh, uh, lighting is not something that's been brought up by anyone, but to me, if you're gonna have an outdoor area in the evening, there's gonna be some, some type of lighting, I would assume. So, I mean, that's, that would be another consideration, but, but we have ordinances that address all of those. So, um, for clarification, um, there is a, a height for fences, correct? And that is, in this?
Well, it's a C, it's a C four, it could potentially go E P.
Okay.
There's no specific, I mean, it says has to be completely enclosed with a gate.
Okay. So, again, we do have ordinances that address noise, fence, and light, and, uh, as far as, I know, Mr. Smith has not asked for any variance from the ordinances as exist now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing, uh, that I wanted to point out, and I know that, I've said this, actually, I think when we were talking about the theater, um, coming forward in McHenry, last weekend, my husband and I went to Woodstock, and, uh, it was for, to see a movie Saturday evening, and it was just packed, and, and we drove around the, the square several times, and then, um, parked off on a side street. That's not unusual. Now, I know it's apples and oranges, Woodstock, McHenry, whatever, but the point is, if people know that there's limited parking going somewhere, like, we went early knowing that there's going to be limited parking in Woodstock. If people are going to a venue, like Mr. Smith, that, that's going to have, you know, more than a couple people, you're gonna have more than a couple cars, you're gonna know that those empty spaces around there are gonna fill up. You might have to walk, um, you know, that's just a given, and I don't know that that, I don't, see, that is a bad thing. So, I guess I'm not concerned, we are certainly constrained by parking. Do I wish we had more pa- parking available downtown? Yes, I do. Alden Glab is, is very accurate, that to, uh, get the parking that we need, it would cost a fortune. We don't have those funds right now, but there are parking available, it might be on side streets, and people might have to walk. That happens during Fiestas, certainly, you know, you just, you plan for those. So, I don't see that as necessarily, um, a, a deal breaker. I, I, I think it's just a given for that locale.
The other comment I wanna make to add to what you just said is, the PLAB is next door to a home, and they are allowed to have a DJ and karaoke, granted, it's indoors, but you can hear it all over. No one complains about that, no one minds, it's a, there's a noise ordinance. It, they follow the rules, they follow the time. It's in the same block. I have approached it and heard it from outdoors when it's indoors. So, there, it's not like this is a quiet neighborhood, there, it's a commercial neighborhood. Alden Schaefer?
Um, probably something unique to me is that, um, I actually live a block away from here, uh, to the north. This area has changed, uh, just that small block has changed dramatically, uh, very positively with, um, with the art studio, the, um, handmade furniture store that's gone in. It's become kind of a little artsy eclectic area for the events that they hold, and, and I think this is going to add to that, in many ways, it are, in some ways, it already has, so, uh, the, that being said, I think the, it, it's changing for a very, in a very positive way, and I, I see it seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, cause I, I live there, I work there. I've talked to many people surrounding it, they love being in that area for that reason, for the activities and things that are close by, and, and for what they can go to from walking. We put up with, you know, parking things at events every Thursday night, which is, again, you plan for that. You, Fiestas is, 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 you know, a positive thing. I think those, those have been activities that have been going on in McHenry for a long time. If you're gonna move to that area, you're gonna know that that, you know, either is gonna be a positive or a negative for you. There, granted, there are some people who leave during Fiestas, I get that too. But, a- again, in thinking of the whole area and the whole community, this, this is changing, and those things are changing down there, hopefully for a positive thing, and, and I don't know if the whole public knows, but that, you know, the Riverside to, uh, Park Street is all, that whole block is commercial. From, from, uh, Park to, uh, Court Street, that whole entire block is commercial, even though there are residents there now, uh, rentals and homeowners, and then the next whole block, from Court to, to Green Street, is all commercial too. So, these are the types of things that are going to be coming to us as a council, and being asked of us, and, and that's gonna happen from this council and beyond. So, I, I mean, I think this is, this is positive, and, and, uh, and we as a community have to continue to be good neighbors, and if not, there's other ways to deal with it. So, I, I, that's, I just wanted to make that point, cause I don't know if everybody knows that, so, from the commercial standpoint.
Other comments? Alden Curry?
Uh, yeah, Alden Schaefer just mentioned the commercial zoning. I guess, yeah, I have a question, how did it get that way? Because as I understand it, these homes have always been there, sort of, you know, since whenever. But how did it get to be zoned in those particular properties from residential to commercial?
My guess is many in eighty-six, when the comprehensive rezoning was done, they were rezoned C four, which allows residential on top of commercial, and, and there were existing residences all around this area.
So, somebody basically living there just, the property got rezoned with, I'm sure there was a hearing and that sort of thing, but...
Correct, and, and, and you can have residential on top, on the bottom. If you do, you can, it's not conforming, but you can, if it's discontinued for thirty consecutive days, you gotta revert back to the underlying zoning of C four, which is not residential on the bottom.
Oh, okay, so if one of these homes, okay, you just said, I just wanted to clarify. If one of these homes didn't have an occupant on the lower floor, you're saying that that would then revert to a commercial only at that point in time?
On the first floor.
On the first floor.
Correct.
Interesting. Alright. Yeah, I, I just, I just have some concerns about the, the detail that we have as far as, I guess when I asked the question on the, on the fence, I, I was thinking that my question and the answer was that the fence would be solid, but what you're really saying is, there is no condition on that fence, so it could be a completely open fence, basically.
It could be.
A metal, like a wrought iron type of a fence, or something like that.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I, I have concerns because of that. Alright, thank you.
Further questions? Alden Santini?
Yeah, um, in, in regards to the, the fence and our dis- our discussion, uh, very, you know, positive, fluid discussion with Mr. Smith over the weekend, pointing out, uh, his thoughts and his items, and what he, what he plans on doing. His plan seemed very, very, uh, very, very well thought out, and, and, and knew what he was doing, because he has to plan for what fits the needs of that facility, and he knows that the people that are in that facility, writing it, what have you, enjoying that inside and outside facility, um, have to be comfortable and adaptable to the environment that he is going to present out there, because if it is not a comfortable, adaptable environment for him to present out there, you know, there, there won't, you know, there, there may not be the, uh, potential intrigue of catering and many private or, or public events at this facility in, in the future. So, I know he'll, you know, he needs, he, he's planning on doing it for, to make sure it fits, you know, the concepts of what his overall goal is for the facility, and I think that will actually benefit the people around it, because I, I, I believe that he'll, uh, be able to, um, you know, come to the powers that be in regards to our staff and, and, and present, um, uh, the type of, um, fancy decorative and height-wise that will, uh, provide, uh, a good, um, comfortable facility for him to be able to, uh, to lease or to, to, to work with potential caterers or whomever in the future, so that they can make a buck, and, and he can, you know, survive there, cause he has invested, uh, a lot of money into that, uh, into that building, which looks, uh, it's very, very, very well, uh, very, very nice presentation on the inside of the building. That's all I have.
Alden Glab?
Just packed it with the way that the ordinance is written, I don't see where we really meet, uh, whatever it is for zoning thirty-one, uh, as far as to my, my satisfaction, and, uh, I just don't feel that, uh, if it isn't in writing, uh, that, that zoning isn't protected or that conditional use is the way it should be. Not questioning anybody's integrity on this or anything else, other than the fact that, uh, if we're approving something like this, to me is like a contract between, uh, the property petitioner and, uh, the city, and, uh, that should be open-ended, and that's why I can't open it for it.
Yeah?
Right, couldn't speak at all.
If you would like to share, please take the part of the third one, or whatever.
That was good.
I'm gonna put two hats on tonight, and I apologize for that. I'm going to build a solid fence, five to six foot tall, from the front of their house to the beginning of my building. What it's gonna look like, I don't know, it's gonna be a class act. If you wanna put it in writing, put it in writing. I think I should be held to the same accord that everybody else should, but you know what? I, I can't believe we're discussing these little details. Secondly, I've agreed to the same hours as Buddies and to the theater. Have no issue with that, no amplified music, I'm happy with that, it's in writing. Now, I'm gonna kinda switch hats a little bit and just tell you a quick story. Two, three years ago, I was so frustrated, so totally frustrated with the attitude going around McHenry about, oh, we have another vacant building, we have another vacant store, everything's vacant, what's, what's happening? Everything's falling apart. The only reason, it's a crazy reason, Alden Glab, you're incorrect, because I'm not a good businessman. A good businessman would have never done what I did. I went and bought that building to prove a point. That building was falling down, it was disaster on the inside, and when I hear that that building is actually taking away from the benefit, or, or decreasing the value of neighboring houses, I'm thinking, seriously? I, I just can't get over that compared to what it looked like two, three years ago. If anything, that building is dramatically improving that area. And I don't care what anybody says, I'm just gonna say it, okay? Now, okay, so I buy this building, I have no idea what I'm going to do with it, cause all I know is I wanna make it a... Because all I know is I want to make it a beautiful building, because it had bow trusses inside, had wooden trusses in the back, and I knew it could be an absolute beautiful, spectacular building for the city. I had an idea of a maker space, an event center, any number of things. You know, some of that could even change yet. Right now, I'm stuck on the event-type facility, trying to figure out if we can put a business plan around that. But my only goal was to say, hey, McHenry, we're not falling apart. People are around here, they're going to put their money where their mouth is, and we're going to build some buildings that we're going to be proud of. And I'm proud of that building. And I got to tell you what, and I'm going to hurt some feelings maybe, but I hope there's a lot of parking space to be had in that area. I really do. Because that is what a successful downtown is, a vibrant city where you have people, you have cars, you have a lot of people. You know, these people are going to come out of, say, my event center, they're going to walk to other facilities and other facilities. And before you know it, and like I think it was Alderman Schaefer said, that's become a little boutique-ier, it's becoming a really nice little classy area. So, the idea is to not have any parking spaces left. Seriously, I know it sounds crazy. But if you go to Lake Geneva, you go to Woodstock, you go to Naperville, you can't find parking. And it's because it's so attractive. So, my second half that I'm talking about is, I think we as a city got to decide, where are we headed? Do we want to encourage people to come up with these developments like this to make our downtown probably, you know, equal to any Crystal Lake, Lake Geneva, whatever the case may be? We have that opportunity with the Riverwalk, the river, and everything else. Why are we debating these details of parking and so on when we want to fill up every parking spot? We want people. That's what drives our tax base, that's what drives the vibrancy of the city. So, I, you know, I may have just cut my own throat by coming up here and being a little negative towards some of the comments, and that's, if you want to vote against me, you know what? Go ahead, that's fine. Point is, this is a labor of love on this building, and my idea is that people are going to follow suit. And I'm telling you the truth on that, and I'm going to leave it there. And quite frankly, I don't think I'm ever going to make any money on that building. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Further comments? The motion on the floor is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and approve an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use and outdoor seating and entertainment for the property located at thirty-three fifteen Pearl Street. Please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's statement of reports. Just a couple of things this evening. First of all, Saturday is the Shamrock Shuffle.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Shamrock Shuffle, which will begin at eight AM, congregating at East Campus, followed on Sunday by the Volunteer Parade, which is being run this year by the Downtown Business Association. That kicks off at one PM. And on Thursday evening is the St. Baldrick's Day Event, a week from Thursday, the sixteenth, St. Baldrick's Day Event at West Campus. Does that begin at five? I think that begins at five. So, I urge you to participate in any or all of those events in support of volunteers that put those things together. That's all I have. Are there any committee reports this evening? Alderman Condon?
Just as a reminder that there's a community development committee meeting on March twenty-seventh.
There's a finance and personnel committee meeting on the twenty-second, March twenty.
Thank you. Any staff reports this evening? Bill, anything I forgot?
I think you covered all of them. Thank you.
Any future agenda items? Seeing none, I'm looking for motion to go into executive session to enter into discussion relating to selection of person to fill the existing vacancy of a city ordinance. Alderman Wimmer? Alderman Curry? Please call the roll. Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Are we leaving or...
No.
Okay, we'll stay here, still won't ask you to step down.